Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We back at it again. Super Dave with the PA Political Review Revolution Podcast. And today we have another great guest. I mean, I think we're gonna, we have a good love hate relationship. I think it's gonna be a great, great podcast today. Probably be one of my best ones. But I'm always saying each and every podcast is gonna be a good one. I have a gentleman by the name of Mr. Philip Klein here. Brother, can you go ahead and introduce yourself to the people that may not be familiar with you on my side of the spectrum?
On your, on your side of the world, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm Philip Klein. I'm the editor of the Southeast Texas Political Review. I've been so since 1994. Can you believe that, Dave?
No, I cannot.
Almost, almost thirty years we've been on the internet doing the Southeast Texas Political Review. It's a, it's a labor of love. And I think what we do, what we do, Dave, is we try to, we try to bring out the inside story of politics. Not what you hear in the media because they're so conservative about how they report. And also, you know, Dave, and I don't wanna shoot down anybody because I used to be that way. But, uh, you know, these young reporters these days that they ship through Southeast Texas.
Right, right.
They just, they, they just don't have the experience or knowledge or, you know, in some cases, the talent to be a good reporter.
Right, right.
And you've got to be a good reporter to be able to ferret out the, the story. You know, I always say there's their side, there's the other side, and the truth is in the middle. So that's kind of, that's kind of what we try to do at the Southeast Texas Political Review. I know a lot of people get mad at us because they're friends with somebody that's friends with somebody else.
Yeah.
Or they call us liars. You know how that goes, Dave. You get the same thing.
Oh, yes, sir.
And they call you liars, and then all of a sudden, the next day, it's, oh, my God, they were right. Well, no kidding, we were right. So anyway, we just try to point out the corruption in Southeast Texas, up and down, uh, up and down the East Texas area.
Right, and absolutely. And I do wanna kind of agree with you and touch up on that, right? Because being a reporter, from what I've seen, it's like a cookie cutter type of deal when I see a lot of people that come move through, um, you know, the Beaumont area and try to, you know, get a better job. It's like, it's like, they're kind of lifeless, so to speak. There's nothing, you know, bad at it, but that's probably how some of the management want, the management probably don't want them, you know, going in and wrecking up, you know, disturbing a lot of things that's going on in Southeast Texas. So it's kind of like, you know, you can't win for losing. If you wanna be a good reporter, come in and shake up some of the corruption and have a good.
Well, that, that's a great point. And, and that brings it to the point of a lot of people, Dave, they don't, they don't advertise on some of these local TVs or, or news stations. You look at the Beaumont Enterprise, the Port Arthur News, they're little, they are literally dying on the vine because they're too scared to report what's going on in any manner that's gonna affect change. And when they refuse to do that, Dave, uh, you know, they're just worried about how much money they're getting for advertising. That's why the review has been so popular. And now we're up to twenty-seven million people who see us every year. That's unbelievable.
Yes, sir, that is great. And, and this is the beautiful thing with, with, um, with social media, right? With the social media, you can create your own media platform. The average regular Joe or Jane, you know, go in and, and you have a good idea and you have a lot of, um, you have a good idea, you have a personality, you have a certain niche you wanna go ahead and try to market to. You can go ahead, boom, get on the internet and become a, become a instant personality. Then, hey, from what I'm hearing, you can make a lot of money off the, um.
You can, you can make a lot of money doing it. One of the things people ask me all the time is why I don't sell advertising. I mean, you know, you're up, you get above anything above a million hits on your website a year. Uh, you can make a lot of money. And the reason I don't is because, well, you know, I don't wanna be arrogant. I don't need the money, number one. But number two, most importantly, is that I don't wanna be holding to anybody. I don't wanna be in a position where I report on somebody, let's say, in the community. Well, let's talk about Mary Bond. Uh, you know, we're, we're all over Mary Bond. Why are we all over Mary Bond? Because Mary Bond is nothing but a criminal that has ripped off politicians. Her own Democratic Party worked her way all the way up in the Democratic Party to be a, um, you know, how do I wanna say this? Uh, to be the vice chairman, I guess that's the position she had. And then she stole from the Democratic Party, and the media says nothing. Could you imagine if that had been a Republican? Oh, my gosh. I mean, it would have been, it would have been splashed on headlines everywhere. And so I wanna make sure that everybody understands that just as the Republicans have problems, the Democrats do too. And so, uh, and I'm not picking, you know, a lot of people say, well, you're just picking on her. No, no, I'm not. I'm exposing the corruption. And that's what it's about, Dave. Same thing you do.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Expose the corruption.
Right, right.
And, and that nobody else will talk about, especially the media, when you can't get these young reporters to even learn how to tie their shoes, if that makes sense.
Right, right. I actually, I actually kind of, um, like Mary Bond a little bit. Just, I, I really don't know a lot about her. But, uh, the little bit I've talked to, it seemed like, you know, a nice person, but, but this, this the thing with me, with the Mary Bond situation, right? Everybody is talking about her, right? Everybody has an issue with her and something. So, and I know a lot of times, dealing in, in, um, politics, right? When everybody's making a big fuss or pointing that this is the bad guy, you kind of have to kind of, you know, look back and see if there any kind of ulterior means, like. Now, when I say that, I'm saying like, like what would happen to Calvin Walker, right? You know, people have their own ideas about that. But when you have this big circus clown show of the, um, the, um, the task force, right? Okay, that sounds good. You know, if he's guilty, he's guilty. But hey, task force, I need you to come over here and take a look at Port Arthur. You know, hey, I need you to come take a look at the Port Arthur School District. When you have one of those task forces refuse to do any of that, and you wanna focus on Calvin Walker, but you have a lot more easier hits over here in Port Arthur, you can get a whole bunch of people to kind of, you know, have a, have a positive momentum to go for a person like Calvin Walker if he was guilty, right? So, um, so, and I was like flabbergasted because they didn't even do that. So, and now that I figure out, all of that was kind of like a circus show to kind of make him look, uh, more guilty than he was. Because if you notice, all of the cases that he had, he had, he barely got in probation. He really didn't do anything, or he got off. You know, it really wasn't that home run that they was trying to portray that. You, you see what I'm saying?
I get it. And so let me, let's, so let's talk about Calvin. Calvin, uh, Calvin did something wrong, okay? He, he, he false five bills. I mean, that was, that was, that was proven in court in front of a jury. But Calvin also had a good position because anybody other that would have stolen from a school district, whether it be Port Arthur, Nederland, Beaumont, Port Angeles, you know, whoever, Hampshire, Panette, if they, if they had done the same thing, they would have been placed in jail. Calvin was never placed in jail other than weekends, and he has to follow the rules of probation. The other thing Calvin did, which I, I, I don't, you know, I know his attorney over in Houston, I've done cases with his attorney over in Houston, uh, in my regular job. I, I can, I can tell you that Calvin thumbed his nose at, at the elected officials and literally gave him the middle finger and the FBI. That put him on everybody's radar. Sometimes it's important for people, if you've done something wrong, to sit down and shut up and don't say anything. Give your apology and go on with your life. But Calvin couldn't do that. Calvin thought he was being attacked all the time. And he probably was, Dave. He probably was being attacked all the time, especially by guys like me. But the reason we attacked was, hey, Calvin, you're no better than anybody else. So stop it. And that was our message.
In other words, Calvin was an uppity negro. And, 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 and other words. In other words.
I hear what you're saying, Dave.
He was an uppity negro that didn't hold his place. Now, he did.
Dave, I love you. I love you, Dave, but listen to me. But Mary Bond is not a negro.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And I'm all over, I'm, I'm worse on Mary Bond than I am on, on Calvin. At least Calvin finally stood up and said, you know, Your Honor, you're right.
Right, right.
You know, I'm gonna pay my restitution. I'm gonna do my time on the weekends, and then I'm gonna do whatever I have to do. Mary's not doing that. Mary, Mary is, Mary's in so deep now. I think I heard the other day that she has over nine more charges coming, some of them federally. Because what she's doing is, is she's just stealing. She can't stop. She just can't stop. And then she sends me a message on my te- on my, on my telephone, uh, that we've been able to track back to her. Oh, well, you're gonna get sued along with the real Morgan and Quinn, as well, as well as the examiner. And I'm like, go away. I mean, really? You know, that just opens the door for me in discovery. And that's the game that's played. People threaten me all the time and say, oh, I'm gonna sue you. And I go, okay, here's my name, here's my number, here's my address for the process server, bring it on over. But always remember, once you sue somebody, right, it opens the door for discovery into your life.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And guys like, guys like me will walk right through that door. And, uh, you know, 'cause I don't, I don't hire attorneys that are, are wimps. I hire fighters. And, you know, and everybody goes, oh, look what he's doing in this lawsuit. Well, yeah, the last two people that sued me had to pay me. And, and they didn't know how they got there.
Right, right, right.
You know, there it is. Now, I think you did say something very interesting about Port Arthur also in that past sentence you just gave me. Let me tell you something. I sat there, when was it? Thursday, I guess it was, uh, when Batiste and, uh, the mayor had a, had a, had a little, uh, what do you wanna call it?
Debate.
Uh, it's really wasn't a debate, but it was a, it was a softball. If, if you've been playing baseball with softballs all day long. But here, but here's the deal. Here is my question that I had spun up, ready to go, if they allowed me to ask it. You know, I'm a member of the press club, been a member a long time of the press club, uh, big supporter of scholarships for young people going in the press. Um, and, and here's what I did. My question was going to be this. Guys, okay, Port Arthur is, is suffering from high crime, high unemployment, and high taxation. Those are three combinations to really hurt a community.
Yeah.
Are you, number one, happy with Tim Durso and the job he's doing as Port Arthur Police Chief? Because nobody ever talks about him. Nobody ever says anything about him. Crime's running out of control. Well, okay. To hear Tim talk about it a long time ago, the place was in bad shape. He had to hire new employees. He had to clean up the police department. He's done so. Uh, he wants more boots on the street, okay? And the second question I would have had for them, so my first question was, are you happy with Tim Durso? My second question, and you're gonna laugh at this one, would you, would you support defunding the police or giving the police more money to do their job in Port Arthur? But they wouldn't let me ask that question.
Yeah, yeah.
I would, that, that's a question that I think, David, everybody in Port Arthur should be asking. Do you really wanna defund the police? And are you happy with the job Tim Durso's doing? I don't know. I don't live there, but I do see the headlines. And I do talk to the cops out on the street who are just furious that they have to continue to watch kids get shot and drugs run through their communities. And, 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 and everybody ignore it. Like, oh, that's just Bob trying to make a buck. Or, oh, that's just Jim doing his thing. You know, that's not right, uh, my friend. We have got to keep the drugs out of the ports. We've gotta keep the drugs out of the schools, and we gotta keep the drugs off the streets.
Now, now, according, now, now, according to you, what, what are the cops saying that's the issue that's, that's preventing them from being tough on crime? Or is somebody telling them not to prosecute drug dealers?
Okay, so, so here's the deal. In any police department, you're either, you take the approach of being reactive, like getting a radio call or, or something happening and you react to it, or you be proactive. You get out on the streets, get out of the cars, go talk to the, the kids, go talk to the parents, go talk to the business community, go talk to the everyday guy on the street and say, what can we do to make your life safer in our community? And, and they don't do that. Why? Because there's only six to eight cops, patrol cars on the street on any one shift. Now, you may say, well, that's a lot of police cars. My answer to you is, no, it's not. You need to at least have sixteen to twenty patrol cars on the street so they can be reactive and proactive. You see the kids out in the street playing some basketball? Go out and play basketball with them. Get to know them. Get to know them as six-year-olds and ten-year-olds and eleven-year-olds. Get to know these kids. That's the only way you're going to have the opportunity to be reactive. Uh, and you, and you know the little ones, and you know their parents, and you know what they're going through in life. Because, you know, it's a socioeconomic problem. You can't put families in poor communities and poor housing and all that other good stuff and not, and not expect to, to have, have the opportunity to help these young people. Um, you know, it's the same way. I live in Nederland, right across the street from y'all. I, you know, we have the same thing. The only difference is Gary Porter has officers in every single school that know the kids, build files on these kids. When a kid loses a parent, they're the first one there to hold them while they're crying. Uh, it's just, it's just being proactive. So I think it's all how you look at police forces. You gotta give these guys money. Um, just like streets, you gotta build streets, you gotta build infrastructure. You know, there was no real infrastructure questions to the, to the mayoral candidates. And I think when, you know, people get discouraged by seeing, you know, the mayor's street looks pretty damn nice, but you drive down your street and it's like driving down a, 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 a deep old, uh, a road. Um, and so I think really, to be honest with you, I think, you know, there's no checks and balances with the media, one. And two, equally, probably more important, they're not harvesting these children and finding out their, their lifestyles and who they're hooked up with. And, you know, you can get into gangs and drugs and all that other stuff, but it all comes down to people. Police officers is a people business. That's just what it is.
Right, right, yeah.
And, uh, I, my personal, my, Dave, my personal opinion is, I think Port Arthur has some major, major, major problems, socioeconomic problems.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And, and, and the only way to solve that is it starts within the family. Mom and dad having a kid. It's, uh, you know, some of the, some of the, and I'm not talking about just the black community. I'm talking about the white community too. We've got to have mom and dad in the house. We've gotta have dads active in these children's lives. We've gotta have dads coaching Little League. Hell, we gotta have Little League. We gotta have swift practice. We got.
I think you're right with more having, having more, having more programs and stuff for the kids. Um, but I think, I think it's more so you have out, out, outside the community, putting their thumb in on the city, right? You have people like who I call the boss hogs and stuff like that. But, but before, but before I get into that, I want you to kind of talk about the, um, I see on your website, right? You have like the black mafia. I want you to kind of lay that foundation down, what you're talking, I wanna kind of, you know, touch some things on that one. Go ahead, brother.
Well, let me, let me, let me tell you where it comes from. It comes from, if you'll recall back, uh, what, fifteen, twenty years ago, the black community and the reverends and the leaders said there was a group of people that were involved in the wa- white mafia. Big time lawyers, uh, you had Carl Parker in that group. They were controlling and running all of the board of directors, all of the, you know, all of the, well, A, board of directors, B, um, school district, uh, boards, uh, C, they were, they were literally running the cities and the counties. And what those guys said is, go. And that was the, that was, that was what they called the, the white mafia. Well, in Jefferson County, if you will look, and I'm gonna go through some statistics here with you real quickly.
Yeah.
Number one, Port Arthur is now fifty-nine percent black, and it is one hundred percent black representation on the school boards and the, um, uh, and, and the city councils, okay?
Yeah.
You go up to Beaumont, Beaumont's doing the same thing. Beaumont is, 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 uh, I think the number is seventy-four percent, um, uh, representation of, of the black community. And out of the seventy-four percent of the reputation of the black community, you have, uh, sixty percent of the community now is black. All other equals forty percent. Okay, so there you go. So it's, it's, if you wanna go with representation by skin color, you've got it. That's fine. But what the black community always said was, we would never, ever, ever act like the white community, and we would never do, do self-ingratiating things to, A, our black community, but B, the community in general.
Right.
Well, now, let's take a look. We got Mr. Portier. He's, who's Superintendent Portier, who's running the black, um, uh, school district, called Port Arthur Independent School District.
Right.
They are in the to- lower five percentile, lower five percentile of any school district in the state of Texas, okay? Now, you look at the city of Port Arthur, city of Port Arthur, it has one hundred percent black representation, just like the Port Arthur Independent School District. And they are, they're, they're running the city into the ground. They're making business leaders mad. They're, they're, they're concentrating on crazy things on how to spend money. This pipe dream called Pleasure Island. I mean, God, please, it's a pipe dream.
Yeah, yeah.
Now we have corruption inside the EDC.
Oh, yeah.
Just like, it, it, it's bad. And so now let's float back up to Beaumont. Now we have, I, like I said, I think it's seventy-seven percent control from the black community in the school district. And now look at the school district. They want to, the state of Texas, this is how bad it is in Beaumont. The school, the, the education department up in Austin wants to close four elementary schools because the kids don't know how to read, the kids don't know how to write, the kids don't, they don't know how, they don't know what to do. Now, yes, some of it is COVID. Oh, we gotta wear a mask. Oh, we gotta, can't let them come to school. And the moms and dads, they weren't teaching them at home. And so all this virtual learning, that was, that was all just a crock. So then we start learning, okay, well, there's corruption on the three things that the white community was accused of. Who gets, who gets bids, right? Who gets bids for, uh, tax dollars? We find out they're not following the law there. Two, we find out that we're passing kids in school that shouldn't be passed only because somebody knows somebody. That's how they're getting moved through.
Right, right.
And three, we pass these crazy-ass bonds.
Yeah.
Corrupt bonds that ingratiate and give money to folks that are connected to the school board, are connected to the city.
Oh, yeah.
This is happening all over Southeast Texas, Dave.
Yeah.
And so all I'm doing is, is I'm pointing out, well, the white mafia's gone, now we got the black mafia. Because the black community's doing the same thing that the white community was doing.
Right.
And everybody, oh, that's racist. No, it's not. It's not racist at all.
Right, right.
Name one white person that's involved in any of this corruption. You can't. I could name five hundred white people that were involved when the white community was taking over. And I was just as mad then as I am now. It's not right. It's not fair. We have, we're a country of laws. Follow the law. Don't, don't break down and not follow the law. And, and, and Dave, the one other thing I wanna point, because I know you have a bunch more questions for me. How does Portier get a law, get away with his report card? Can you answer me that? How does Portier, how does he get away with having the, the worst school district, one of the worst school districts in Texas? How, how does he get away with it? Why does the board put up with that? I, I, I'm confused. I don't understand.
The board, well, well, yeah, I'm gonna go ahead and start with the school district. First, in my opinion, right, the board is all sold out, right? What I've been preaching recently, like, we have goddamn kids on the board right now. We have, um, Brandon Barti, doesn't have a clue what the hell's going on. We have, uh, Get, um, what's his name? Um, Taylor. We have a young, young guy named, I, I, I'm having a brain full of getting his first name. We have Taylor on, oh, yeah, Taylor Getwood, right? You have Taylor Getwood, who's can.
Yeah, who says he lives in Port, yeah, that's the other thing. Who says he lives in Port Arthur, right? Says he lives in Port Arthur. What he does, if he lives over in Houston, goes to school over in Houston. What the hell? I mean, it's just like everybody gets on me for getting, of getting on the city council of Nederland. Here we have two people represent one district, and we have one district that's not represented. I find that out. I do an investigation. I post a story. Now nobody in Nederland will talk to me. Because, oh, well, you, you shouldn't do that. Do what?
No.
You know, you're, if you really wanna be technical, and if the white hats got involved, they would have to go back over every single vote in Nederland, Texas. And, and each one of those votes, if it was a cross vote, meaning it was a four-three or three-four, whatever it could be, it, they'd have to take that vote out, it would fail, and they'd have to redo it again. Not to mention if, if anybody introduced any proclamations or anything.
And, and let me go ahead, I wanna finish on Port Arthur. My bad, I'm gonna go ahead and finish on Port Arthur, hit the city, hit the school district, hit the city of Port Arthur. With the, um, with, with the school district, right, you have him, and he, you know, you know, he's a young man, right? He wants to do his thing over there in, um, in, um, um, the school that he's at. Was it TSU? Whatever, one of the colleges.
TSU.
Yeah, TSU, whatever college he's at. So he wants to be Mr. TSU. That's fine. But, you know, we need somebody over here to deal with these issues of school district. You have that, uh, them two young men, right? And you have another, uh, that just got elected by the name of Jacory Narcisse, if I'm not mistaken. I think that's his name. So you have three individuals, right, that, that's gonna be over portery. Now, you need people that, that can lead portery, teach portery, and discipline portery if need be. But how can you do that when you have three young individuals that probably graduated under portery? You know what I mean? I know at least with two of them graduating to portery, it's like a power imbalance. How can you train him to teach him anything when you graduated under him, right? You probably can't even navigate the TEA website to pull any kind of information up on the school. You know, you know what I'm saying?
How do you expect a twenty-two-year-old that's never had a job?
Right, right.
Never had, never been functional in, other than maybe a lifeguard, I think he was, or maybe he was sat groceries or something?
Yeah.
To sit on a school district board, oh, I'm more in touch with the kids. Okay, how are you more in touch with the kids? Well, because I, I think we need to spend more money here, here, and here, and here. So, okay, I got it. So what you're telling me here is, is that you wanna spend other people's money. Well, I call it, you know what I call it, Dave? You and I talked about it, OPM. A lot of these officials have the OPM disease. I'm gonna spend other people's money on pet projects, on people who I know, or people that, you know, what I think needs to be spent on, rather than roads, bridges. In the Port Arthur Independent School District case, teaching them reading, writing, and arithmetic.
Yeah.
I mean, and then they go to college and they plunk out at the first year because they don't know how to read or write or, or count. And it's just kind of, you know.
And, and then, and then the school district, right, is basically, those people are in, in, placed in there, right? Them puppets are placed in there so that Puerto Rican can keep his job, right? See, I don't understand how in the hell that Puerto Rican talk crap to the, um, to the citizens as much as he can. You know, it's like everything, the, the kids folk, the kids folk. Look, you have to take some accountability having an organization where kids are housed. You have hundreds of kids are housed, right? Hell, if these kids was at home, they wouldn't be getting as much issues as they do in school because they're around a group of kids more often right there in the school. You, I understand, parents have some issues, they need to take care, they need to do their part, yes. But for the school, this is to say, it, they don't have nothing to do with them, right? That's bullcrap, right? And then studies have shown, when you have these zero tolerance policies, right? There's just a pipeline for the, um, kids to go in, um, the kids to go, to go in the jail. That's just a prisoner pipeline, you know, system. So you have to take a look at that. You have to have the care enough to do that restorative justice, right? It's another alternative than zero tolerance, right? Restorative justice. So if you don't have the people that care enough to try to implement some type of plan for the kids like that, then it's all doomed. But we have portery in there, right? He's a feminine type of superintendent, right? But he doesn't have, well, from what I've been hearing, we don't have any type of male authority that's an actual principal, right? That's a main principal, not an assistant principal. Now, if you look in New Orleans, like these other pops on patrol, dads on patrol type of programs, they have a strong male influence, right? And you mentioned that earlier about these kids, about fathers in the home. So you need that strong male atmosphere in the schools, right? You need to see that male principal, especially our black kids, the black male principals in there, giving out leadership, giving out instructions or whatnot. And also. And also having, having, um, black male leadership in the school district with these kids. You're gonna have a different temperament when it's dealing with, um, dealing with issues. Like, uh, you know, it's, it's just, this is just my opinion. I don't have any facts on that. But men and women deal with issues a little bit differently, right? It's my opinion. I don't have no, any statistics on it. A lot of times, some women deal with things more emotional than men. That's just my opinion. I'm not saying I'm right, you know, right on anything on it. That's just kinda how I see some things and we need to have a balance.
That's, that's a great point. And let me, let me take that point and notch it up one. You ready?
Yeah, go ahead.
All these Port Arthur Independent School District teachers keep saying is, we want more money. Okay, I'm in. I think that we need to pay some of these teachers more money. I'm in. I'm in a hundred percent. I know you're surprised to hear that. I'm in a hundred percent. But we want you teachers, we want you teachers to perform. What? We want you teachers to perform. We want you to teach reading, writing and arithmetic and get these kids to pass some of these tests so that your school district's not the embarrassment of Texas. Oh, well, that starts in the family. That starts at the home. It does. Well, then explain to me how some of these famous people around the world who had horrible educations always talk about being taught by teachers, good teachers, that could teach them reading and writing and arithmetic and that got them excelled. Look at some of the most famous people, not only in the black community, in the white community, in the Hispanic community, that are doing so well for themselves. They always go back and say, you know, it was Mrs. Jones in third grade that got me interested in reading. That's how I became a writer. And so, you know, and, or a chemist, that's how I became a chemist, is that I had Mr. Mister Jones who taught me chemistry in, in fifth grade and I really leached onto it and he, he made sure that I did well. That's what I'm trying to say, is that it, it, you're right. It, it is, it's all about the teachers. You're right. And the teachers need more money. They're right. But you get into a school district like Port Arthur I S D and you get five percent that can pass tests and you, and you're still graduating them? You, 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 you gotta ask yourself the question, what? Well, what is wrong? Where are we going wrong? Does that make sense?
Oh, absolutely.
Am I right?
Right. Then you have another, uh, issue with P I S D. It's nothing but a money hustle because you have it upside down with admin costs, right? You have a real balloon of admin costs where
Yep.
you don't have the teacher's pay raise, right?
Yep, you're right.
Another killer thing, uh, uh, we've had close to four hundred million dollars in bonds in the past, what I'm gonna say, fifteen years, right? Uh, one hundred ninety-five million one year and I think another one, at least nothing less than one eighty-five million. So close to four hundred million dollars of bonds, but we haven't had anything to do with it. Look, if all this money was being spent for bonds in Port Arthur, I would at least came up with some type of local company. Hell, I would've said either, either, uh, K T M and G P Industrial, right? Basic averages companies over here in, in, in the, in Port Arthur. It doesn't even have to be them, but I'm just using them as example. We could've had a plan where they hire a lot of people in Port Arthur, right? Including since it's not in the type of, um, twit car situation, you're doing, uh, construction over there at the schools. Hell, they could've at least had some type of big deal where they hire a lot of people and also some people that may not have the perfect records. You know what I'm saying?
You're right, and you're right. But, but listen, but listen, hold on, you're, you're hitting it out of the park. You're killing it.
Yeah.
I'm telling you, in my opinion, you're killing it right there. But then you have to talk to the plant managers.
Right, no, no.
And the plant managers will tell you, hey, I hire these people all day long, every day of the week to give back to the community what the community's given to us. But I can't even get them to pass a spelling test, let alone a math test.
Right, right. I'm talking, yeah.
Yeah, and then they go, what do you guys want from me? This is like, we're sitting on a big bomb out here. You wanna put someone that doesn't know what they're doing into a big bomb and blow up the community? No.
No, no, I'm not talking about the plants. I'm talking about the school district, right?
Oh, the school district.
Yeah, when, when they had their, their, their four hundred million dollar bonds, right? Them two businesses with two hundred million dollar bonds apiece, or closer to two hundred million dollars, right? I said, since it's not the, uh, plants or refineries, hire some of the people that may have been in trouble, right? You know, and then, and then regular folk, regular folks, people that have been in trouble, whoever need a job, to come work over there. So we go ahead and get the building. You have two main, uh, companies that's leading the situation, right? So you'll be filling out jobs down here that people work. We're at the school districts. Well, you don't have to be in a side of plant, in the type of twick situation, you know, any kind of high security thing. So that you can hire a lot of the community down here, building also use their money to give back. And then, like I said in my previous podcast, right? The biggest indicator with, with crime, right, is poverty, right? Nobody don't wanna put it in, 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 in perspective, like I'm putting. They, they wanna have a damn rally, a damn chalk contest, a dance, a get together, a picnic, a barbecue, all this stuff instead of focusing on the economics. Because the study of criminology, right, that says high poverty, high crime. Low poverty, low crime. So if nobody over here is focusing on economics, in other words, jobs, we're not really doing anything to try to solve the crime down here in southeast Texas. So that was one situation where I could say, hey, we got the bond from the citizens. We go ahead, put the work in, but we hire a lot of people. That could've been one program we could've been working on is, hey, we get these two companies, have a joint venture together where they can hire a whole lot of people and get the work done. You know what I mean? So, and, and we solving our own problems with our own money.
And one, and one point I wanna, I wanna again clarify is that if I hear one more friggin' school district superintendent anywhere in east Texas say, oh, well, we need new schools because it's better learning and they'll make the kids smarter. And then all of a sudden, you get back five years, exactly. You get five years down the, the road and, and what happens? Well, will the, the grades drop? Well, is that because they built new buildings? No, it's because they took their emphasis away from the teachers and teaching children and put it on building new buildings. Yeah, we got Taj Mahals all over southeast Texas down in school.
And you got the same.
One school, not one school district that they're, that, that's gone up. Except for one, which is Fort Angeles Groves. They're up right now, three percent in their testing, which I think's pretty good. Uh, but, you know, they're doing one building at a time, okay? One little building at a time. They're not doing the whole school district at a huge bond.
Right, because it's a money hustle down here. It's, it's strictly a money hustle. That's all it is. They don't, they don't give a damn about the schools. It's just a money hustle.
Yeah, tha- that's right. You got a bunch of yahoos in Nederland that are running around spending other people's money for, for these huge buildings that are sinking into the ground because they're building them on rice paddies. You can't do that. You gotta have major infrastructural issues. But number two, Dave, is that, 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 the teachers, the teachers, the teachers are just shaking their head saying, we can't teach. They're, they're, we're just not able to teach. And so, you know, you talk about the bright and the best that wanna run these plants down here. And I want, look, I want more than anything, our children to stay home in southeast Texas. They're not. Because there's no, it, it's not about the job, it's about who you know. And, and, and that's the problem. And, and you know what? You know who did that? The white fa- the white mafia did. All those folks in the white community that did that all along, right? And all special deals. But you know what? The black mafia, they took care of South Park Independent School District, didn't they? They blew the building up. Go back and look what they're doing. The, the, the leadership in the black community is doing, they're, they're wiping the, they're wiping it dry. And that's why they sit up there with that smirk and say, now, we're gonna put whatever name we want to put on the building because that's what y'all did when y'all ran it. And that's the mentality. We can't have that mentality. We can't have it.
Now, oh, yeah, I'm glad you brought back to that point. I wanna go to the black, the black mafia. It's pretty, pretty much in Port Arthur, right? See, there really is no black mafia in Port Arthur, right? Cause to tell you the truth, Klein, if there was a black mafia in Port Arthur that was, that had a, a stronghold on the money, they, they, they'd have the damn Texas Rangers, everybody coming down here and arresting all these jokers down here. But because
I don't know.
Because the white, see, eh, see, when you used to post all that, I was praying that they was coming down arresting these, uh, past mayors for the vehicle violation when you had stuff on free. I was praying that, man, I hope Klein is right on this. You know what I mean? That they're gonna come down and just mass arrest all of these jokers. You know what I mean? So, but then.
I was right. But you know what happened? The people that controlled the black community through the white community made it disappear.
Right, yeah, that, that's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying. The D A.
At the time.
Now, these D As are white. Yeah, these D Hs are white. Mannes and, um, Wertham, they white. You know what I'm saying?
I don't, well, yeah, but Bob, Bob Wertham is more of a, he's more of a, he is more of a guy that, that's willing to that, that's willing to take a chance on prosecution. But he's kinda, he's more of a politician than he is a prosecutor.
That's what I'm saying.
He, he wants to, he wants to make sure he get that conviction first, rather than roll the dice.
Yeah, it, it's politics. Man, you could've got, he can, he can easily get these convictions down here. Cause man, like, I don't, look, I, it's so many times that these former council members, some passed away, some here that's went over to the, the D A complained about it. We had this forensic order. Look, we've been complaining about this. You can't tell me that they don't have a goddamn.
They got it. Oh, no, I know that.
It's, 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 it's a, it's a black mafia front, but it's controlled by white folk. You know what I mean? Because the D A, the D A could've been, put all these jokers in jail. They could've been put all these, under Rico. They, they could've hit everybody down here with Rico.
They could've taken everybody down, but you know what?
Cleared them out. Rico would've cleared everybody out down here.
But you know what? You know what? Here's, here's what you'll hear from behind the scenes. That you will hear, if you were sitting in these, some of these white politicians that hold immense amount of power in east Texas. If you asked them, well, you know, why didn't you go after the black community? You know what they'll tell you? Well, then I would never get reelected. I'd lose my job.
That didn't stop them with, um, with, um, with Beaumont. That didn't stop them at all with Beaumont. Because in Port Arthur, white folks are getting the money. White folks are getting the money. The people who is kinda running this down here is the Chamber of Commerce. You have people like Boss Hogg. You had, um, what's the, what's that fat bastard name that was on the Chamber of Commerce? Um, he, he, he left now. Um, what's that joker?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I know who you're talking about.
Um, what's, uh, I can't think of his goddamn name.
I can't.
Cause that fat bastard.
We're having a mental, we're having a mental breakdown here.
See, yeah, exactly. Uh, Bill McCoy, right? Bill McCoy, yeah. That bastard, right? See, when, 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 um, when they had gotten rid of, see, when, see, I'm gonna tell you another thing. They put Brian McDougall and that black police chief, right? Because they both had experience with the Indian casinos, right? So they was betting on this big casino deal to come down over here to Pleasure Island. And you had Melvin, uh, Patrick Melvin, he did, it's in Arkansas. He was, had experience with the Indian chief. And you had Brian McDougall from Shawnee, Oklahoma or whatnot, forgot exactly where, I think that's it. But he had some, uh, casino experience. So that's white mafia moves right there. That's not black mafia move. That's white mafia. So, so these people is put in place for them. Brian McDougall, as soon as, as soon as, oh, man, he, he straight destroyed this goddamn city. That's the one who killed the whole police department.
So let me ask you a quick question. Okay, and I, and I don't know if you know the answer to this question, but I hope you do.
Right.
What is the number one biggest pork project in east Texas that creates zero revenue? Do you know which one that is?
No, I do not.
Okay. Would, would it surprise you that over a billion dollars has been spent on this project right underneath your nose?
Oh, I, I wouldn't be surprised. I wouldn't be surprised. Cause that, that's another area I need to.
It's called Pleasure Island.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Pleasure Island has cost the taxpayers well over one billion dollars in the last fifteen years.
Fifteen years, okay.
Billion dollars. The biggest government project in all, in all of east Texas. Okay, now, I'm gonna come back and, 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 and I'm, this is kind of a rhetorical question.
Yeah.
Who has been the number one sponsor? Okay, who has been the number one sponsor? Uh, 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 of, of that pork project?
Uh, don't know right off.
Texas Legislature.
Okay, okay.
Why is the Texas Legislature so bullish on Pleasure Island?
Uh, casino development?
Nope. Because if you think, if you think the guys over at the Golden Nugget are ever gonna allow, ever gonna allow.
Yeah, yeah.
A, 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 a building such as it could be built.
Yeah, oh, yeah, that's.
You got another thing coming.
That's why I figured they got, they got, uh, crab canned, yeah.
Yep. That ain't happening. That, that's just not gonna happen. Equally, the, the island, have you seen any of the architectural or the engineering studies on it? It's falling into the ocean.
Okay, yeah, 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 yeah.
You know about that? And they can continue to put more and more and more, uh, how you wanna say, uh, the, more and more and more, um, uh, dirt onto the, onto the island. But it's just gonna fall in. The reason for that is, it's a man-made, uh, island. And, and they didn't do it right. It was never done right. And, but, but they still say, oh, it's a diamond in the rough. Oh, they came through and they spent, uh, what, six million dollars on a yacht area? Has no yachts. I mean, and, or a housing complex that has maybe twenty houses in there for the rich and famous. Um, I, 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 you know, it, it's just, it's other people's money. They just believe in using other people's money. It's a mind thought is what I'm trying to tell you. We have to change the mind thought in the citizens of Port Arthur, the citizens of Jefferson County and the citizens of Beaumont. We have to change the mind thought. And it has to happen sooner than later.
Right, but the deal is, the mind thought, you have a lot of politicians and people telling you, hey, we're gonna revitalize this, right? We're gonna revitalize it.
Well, you spend, that's, that's, that's the code word for other people's money. We're gonna spend more money.
But I try to, but I try to tell people, look, if, if the previous people, right? The Hayes family with all those, those connections that they have, right? Wasn't able to do it back then. I really don't believe these dumbass yahoos right now that we have in council, you know, that won't be able to do anything right now without having to burn the taxpayers' money, right? Cause that's the main thing. That's the main problem that was going on. Um, a lot of, a lot of, uh, companies, industries would want Port Arthur to put the main bulk in the project, right? So in case if it failed, hey, it wasn't that much money coming out of developer, hey, it's coming out the city and we have, you know, and we holding this damn financial bag right here. That was the issue with downtown. And that's why that couldn't, the first phase of it was a shopping phase. That, that fell to the wind when, when, uh, Stone Gate and further northern expansion happened. Then after that, they wanted to make it like an entertainment hub with the, with the, um, with Mardi Gras and all that. That's why they put a pavilion out there. So that kinda fall by the wayside. Now you have this business development downtown with the stuff with Motiva trying to be the anchor of the downtown development, trying to bring some businesses downtown. So that's about the last hope of downtown. So, you know.
Well, yeah, but Dave, let me ask you this. I was downtown Port Arthur three days ago, four days ago. It doesn't look, it looks like it's a, an abandoned project. Am I wrong? Or maybe they're just taking this, what, what's going on down there?
The project is abandoned technically right now, but Motiva said they're gonna pick it up. But one, one of the big problems we have down now, right, right now is that when we sold the health building to Port Arthur, right, the hel- the, the health department, I mean, when we sold it to, uh, Motiva, for some reason, they tried to get out of there within a certain amount of time. They wasn't able to get out of there in a certain amount of time. So now we gonna have to pay Motiva rent for the same building that we sold them. Uh, to the tune of twelve thousand a month. That's stupid. We have to pay them. And now, twelve thousand a month with that. So now, when, when they bought the other building on Ninth Avenue, they had some complications where now there's gonna be two years. We're gonna have to stay in the building we had for two years now. So, I look, these yahoos.
Question is, then, then my question to you is.
They have to wait on us to move. They have to wait on us to move.
Who the hell's in charge? Who the hell's wasting this kinda money?
That's what I'm saying. You have, you have, look, you have the city ma- this was going on. The city manager's following a beat of somebody else, right? He's following a beat of somebody else. While you have the council, don't have no fucking clue of what's going on, right? They don't have no clue what's going on and they don't have no way to check them, check the council because they have so many new people over there, right? You got people don't have a clue what they're doing. So, you know, we, we had people like Bay Lewis in there. We could've had somebody like Bay Lewis in there following this stuff up, but you know, we, we don't know how to, how to qualify a certain politician. So. So, you have a council not really knowing what's going on. You have a city manager following the plans of hell. The um, I'm, that's what I say, the city attorney, right? Let me, let me, let me, let me say, let me say something, right? Just like what need, just like what happened with Beaumont. When you wanna take out the corrupt corrupt regime, you took out the uh the the attorney over there for BISD. Just like the EDC, they wanna try to change, change hands as a hostile takeover. They took out the the city attorney over there. You have to take the city attorney out over here in Port Arthur for this place to get any better, right? You have to remove the city attorney because you have these clowns running around here doing all of this illegal stuff. And I'm suspecting, right, because the city attorney kinda clears them with it. It's kinda, you know, give them instructions on that. That's just me speculating on that. I don't know for sure, right? But I understand they're doing too, they're too stupid to do all this illegal stuff without somebody giving them some type of legal protection. You see what I'm saying?
I agree because because I tell you what, you you just hit it on the head. It just popped into my brain. If you'll go back and you will remember, the police officer, I mean, I'm sorry, strike that, the firefighter. That was at a traffic accident scene. And I think it was Kinlaw, if I remember right correctly. I may be wrong. So, if I'm wrong, I apologize. But somebody wa- walked over to one of the firefighters. And literally shoved him out of the way. We had the video and we put it up.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And that's assault. And who who in the hell does this? Does this elected official think they are that they can push firemen or policemen around or do whatever? It's embarrassing. And I I I guess what I'm trying to say to you, Dave, is that. It's that, it's that mentality that, oh, I'm an elected official now. It's kinda like, some cops are bad cops. You give them a badge and the gun and all of a sudden they change who they are. But now, some of them will tell you, yeah, but but some of them will tell you, well, you know, you just don't understand what it's like out in the streets. Well, don't say that to me because you know me. I've been out on the streets for a very long time. And I know what it's like out on the streets. I know the highs, the lows and everything in between. And you know, there's no reason for an elected official, whether you're a tax assessor or whether you're a. Uh, you know, a a city council member to go up to a police officer or firefighter and shove them. You don't do that.
But this, but this is the thing, though. The ignorant ass fire department, when he ran again, people was talking about, hey, that's gonna come up. But the ignorant ass people in the fire department, they supported Kinlaw back. And then, and then check this out, they supported him when he ran, when a a former fire department named Charlie Lewis ran against him. Instead of supporting the guy that used to work with him side by side, Charlie Lewis being a former um fire department. They chose um uh Thomas Kinlaw, getting the one who had that incident out there with the fire people. So, the fire department, they complicit with it. They they complicit with it.
Call some of these unions jokes.
They they complicit with it. They working out the.
But then when it comes down to election time, they give them a bunch of money and they support them.
Right.
I just, I I just.
They blowing up the money in the silver service. Yeah, they blowing up their money in their silver service. So, you know, that's kinda what's going on. So, no, it's not really of a black mafia because like I, like we had said earlier, they get arrested. You have these DAs that's not turning, that's not, you know, doing anything despite we goddamn hate. So, hey, look, we need the guy to clean this up, you know? They don't give a damn. You have the people with the chamber.
Because they're scared about their reelection. Now, now.
That's excuse.
That gives the black community power, which is fine.
This probably is the only space that I've heard that junk crap before. Cause nobody ever, nobody ever cares about the black community when the time to go to crime. You know what I'm saying? When it's really time to go to crime. Nobody is caring about the black community. So, I, that's, that's some hard work. They did that with Calvin Walker, ran through all of them. They didn't care about that. And this is goddamn Port Arthur. You can easily prove this stuff, but the money, the money, the procurements, all that stuff is going out the goddamn door. And that's the main problem with this stuff. City, city, the money is leaving out the door. It's not, it's not going towards the black community. They don't give a damn. Now, you may, you may have people, I'm suspecting, like Barti that'll cut his own little deals, like, hey, I'm gonna go take, I'm gonna go try to take over his EDC money. Y'all can have his regular city money, you know? That's what I'm guessing what's going on. That's kinda lead us to the EDC. As you can see.
But then, but then in front of the press, you get Barti and uh, what's his name? That's uh, the chairman, Batiste, and they act like they're singing cousins in the choir. And you go, what? Wait a minute. Batiste, you keep telling us how mismanaged everything is, but you get up there and put your arm around Barti and say, what a great guy he is. Yeah, I agree with him here. I agree with him there. But then you get out on your campaign stump and you say, they shouldn't be doing this. This is outrageous. This is, I don't know, some, why don't we have some of that in front of the media? And they don't. And that's a problem.
Yeah, and that's kinda what I don't like. I don't like people half-ass bull crap. And I, you know, I try to take this as war, right? I try to understand politics as war. We can't be kissing and hugging these people. There's, there's, we know that's doing wrong for each other, right? You were just saying that the man was stealing money on the goddamn news. You know what I'm saying? So, hell, don't, you know, keep it real. Hey, we need to get this guy out of here. He's lying to y'all. He's saying that he has to go on these goddamn trips so he can be a part of the meeting to try to get some federal fucking money. That's a goddamn lie. You don't have to, you don't have to burn the taxpayers' dollars to go to Washington DC.
Remember, hey, you remember a long time ago, who was the first person in the media? That went and got travel expenditures from the mayor of Port Arthur? Remember who that was? That was me.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And that was, I forget, who was the mayor back then?
Was it Prince? I think the mayor did it.
No, that was before Prince.
Uh, Ortiz?
Yeah.
Yeah, it had to be Prince. I don't say Prince.
It was Ortiz. That's what it was, Ortiz. Remember? I went after Ortiz and I said, oh, look. We're getting a two hundred dollar bottle of wine delivered up to our room. Oh, look here. And uh dinner for two in our little room up here. Who do we have dinner with?
Yeah.
Mister Ortiz. You know, you go back through and you do, you look at all that. Now, did Oscar do anything that was terrible or horrible? No. Did he expend taxpayers' funds? Yes. But is that what the taxpayers should expect from their elected officials? Absolutely not. Absolutely not.
Right, right, yeah. You're absolutely right about that. And that's the frustration that we've had as people. Look, nobody's gonna give you, gonna gonna cancel you for going after black folk. And then, even if it did. White, white folks never cared about this shit before. White folks never cared about putting a black person in jail on a high school and looking. Especially at the goddamn DA level. That never fucking happened. Anybody to tell you that right now over here, that's a lie. That's a goddamn lie.
Let me give you another example. Lane Walker, Judge Lane Walker.
Oh, yeah.
When we did that thing with, do you, do you remember that?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And how we went after Lane Walker for what he did to, happened to be one of my employees in one of my other companies.
Right, yeah.
But 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 then, you know, he 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 lied and he got indicted for lying. And then all of a sudden, the indictment disappeared. Wow, how'd that happen? You know, here's the deal. Here's your bottom line.
And and then now with Walker, right, he's touted as some kinda savior. I've been, I was hearing about that a long time ago. He's kinda going after the um, the other judges on there. He wants to go after somebody. I'm like, what? He's well, yeah, he's touted as like a hero, a a a renegade now, a rebel. He's kinda touted as a rebel wanting to go after the other folks.
Here, hey, here's a scary scenario for you. Wayne Walker becomes district attorney.
Yeah.
That will be the scariest thing that could ever happen to Jefferson County. I know what I'll do.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna pack up and leave.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah.
I will. Oh, he'll come after me. He'll come after, oh, he'll come after everybody.
Yeah.
That's, that's what he'll be. Cause he's vindictive like that. Everybody knows he's vindictive. Look what he did to his own brother. I mean, my God. Who does that to their brother?
Who is brother? Who is brother? What he did?
Lane Walker to Glenn Walker. He stole his house from him down on Pleasure Island, according to the filings I've seen.
Oh, okay.
And, you know, I I you just kinda look at that. That's a big lawsuit going on in Galveston County.
Right.
And you look at that, you go, you know, it's unbelievable. But anyway, Dave, I've gotta, I've gotta go to my next meeting.
No problem.
I will, uh, I I thank you so much for having me on your show. Listen, let me tell you something.
Yes.
You and I disagree sometimes, right? We're cats and dogs, are we not?
Absolutely.
But you know what? I appreciate you for putting yourself out there. You're a leader in the community that's willing to say, hey, wait a minute, what about this? And, you know, we've gotta have more of that, Dave. We've gotta have more of you out there that are out there willing to put their, put their, their well-being on the line. Put their honesty on the line. And most of all, put the interests of all the people ahead of their own opinions.
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir. Oh, yes, sir. I appreciate that.
Congratulations on your site. I hope when I'm long gone, you're still up on the air, my friend.
Oh, I appreciate it, brother. I'm gonna try to be. I'm gonna try to be. Especially with this internet, you can just do it at the whim of a head and for very low cost, too.
Yeah. And hey, this was fun. Let's do it again.
Yes, sir. We have, we have to, absolutely.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Dave. I appreciate you.
No problem. Take it easy.
Thank you, brother. Have a great one.
Yes, sir. Later. There you go. That's it. And uh, everybody on the PA Political Revolution Podcast, I appreciate everything for listening. And again, we knocked out another good podcast. And everybody, take it easy. Until next time, peace. Don't forget to, oh, don't forget to share. Share this um podcast. Later.